Can you guys hear me? Okay, good. I can't hear you yet because you're still muted, but that's fine.
How about, how about now?
Yep, you're good. Oh, thank you.
Unless Greg's doing it at the same time. I don't know. Are we? Good evening. Hi Chris, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Well.
Hey Chris. Jeff, do you know how to get it so I can get to the main screen, you know, the?
Which mean?
One will have.
I think the answer is about to be, hold on.
I want to get to Board Docs. I don't know how, it just, there's just a line of icons on the right.
So you just need like Chrome or Safari or somebody.
Alright. You should now be able to. I think. Open up whatever you want.
Well, I think he's looking for like an internet browser.
Yeah, I'm looking for.
You're. Do you normally use Chrome?
I don't know, I just click on the damn thing and.
Whatever brings me to the internet.
You're not connected to a network. You should be good now. I think you were.
In Board Docs.
What's that?
And just type in Board Docs.
Uh, if that's your browser, then.
Usually there was an icon.
Yeah. I think you were, um, it was trying to log you into the police wireless networks, maybe the password wasn't correct.
These usernames are now. Always pre-filled.
Alright, we're, we're getting situated. Although it is, I guess I can over the meeting now, so. Um, yes, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, it is. Six thirty-two, I've already confirmed that Chris. Can hear us and Megan, you can hear us as well?
Yes.
Very good. Um, and so I'll read the full meeting script after we return into open session, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. For the reasons stated in Board Doc, anybody wants to make a motion?
I will move to, um. Enter executive session to consider the purchase. Exchange lease or value real property if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body sixty-one thousand three hundred.
But a second.
Second.
Alright, and we will reconvene in open session, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We are in executive session as soon as. We join that room.
Absolutely.
I want to make sure.
Yeah, that's one sky we can see.
Yes, we're live, great.
If I was thinking, there's a view on Zoom where you can just show the people that have their cameras on, which will make everyone a little bit bigger. But the problem is you wouldn't then, I don't know if you would then see the hand raised, right?
Yeah, let's keep it the way it is. I like to see, you know, Bill Pullman's on for the reviewer later and that.
My, my, I thought I was just thinking about it. Maybe you could, on your surface, have, let's assume, young, this is probably too late.
Let's think about it for next time. Let's not add anything to this speech, but I, yeah, that might work out well. All right. Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Chair Jeff Swanberg. A good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely, and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs, and we recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs, unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you are participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields support to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Write in with public comments. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Public comments be limited to three minutes each. Thank you very much. Now let us turn to the first item on the agenda, and I will ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, in this law, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Good evening, and the board would like to hear public comments. If there is further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if we are able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. And so I will start and see if there are any public comments in the room this evening. And seeing none, I will see if there are any public comments from online this evening, from the Zoom call. All right, very good. So we will move on to item four on our board docs agenda, which is the 12 Bancroft Street disposition, and we have some good news. We finally have some action from the state, uh, which means we are set up for the next step, which is this preservation restriction for the old Coolidge School. So, uh, Mr. Town Administrator, would you like to fill in any details there?
I would agree. Because I've simply told people, a box check, because we've been trying to abide by number three, redevelopment is the school, um, over time. I want to introduce a couple of people, Ben Taylor, who's the town council, who's joining us via Zoom, and Taylor Bearden, he's with Civic Development. Thank you both for joining us. Ben has been instrumental in sort of advising the town, and particularly my office and his local commission, that's, as we're working with the state, the Secretary of State, the historical commission, uh, to get this preservation restriction, which was a vision of the progressive process, um, that the 12 Bancroft Street use committee had formed, and then we went, uh, so it's listed, what, what the preservation restrictions actually are, uh, it was just extremely delayed to get through the state, um, to get back to us. Um, and the, and the restriction itself, um, has two bodies, which is the select board and his local commission. Probably skipping something. Uh, Attorney Taylor, do you want to add anything?
Uh, thanks, thanks, Town Administrator. Uh, I don't have much to add to that right now. Obviously, if the either member of the select board or historical commission has any questions, I'm happy to answer that or go over any provisions of the document itself. Unless there's any questions.
Uh, one question that I would have is just to protect the town and our intent here, and I uh, no way believe that the developer delayed this, but what are the remedies for the town should we learn that the developer has in some way violated the star preservation of the building?
Sure. So go through the preservation restriction itself. Um, I believe first looking to, uh, section 14, there's a grantee's remedies, uh, section, the grantee here is the town accepting the preservation restriction. Um, so really, it's pretty broad in that a town can attain both, you know, um, injunctive or equitable relief, uh, which would include actually, you know, orders from a court to restore the building to, um, the state that it's currently in. So the ideal of a preservation restriction is to restore what's on the ground today and provide a check through the town, uh, to permit any changes in the future. So really, it's pretty broad in terms of what the town's remedies are. Um, starting with nicely provision 14 there. I don't want to like read the whole thing, uh, but.
David, does that satisfy?
Yeah, thank you.
And any questions from the historic commission as well, right now? All right. Well, um, and I could have asked the historic commission if you want to come forward and open your meeting as well, since I think you'll be taking the vote.
It is technically.
With us.
You should open your meeting, and then, yeah, this is the chair said.
Just as if you are.
Would, yeah, would. All right, and we do have a quorum here. So, um, all right, well, if there's no further discussion, then I'll ask the historic commission if you want to take your vote, or do you want to say anything about the process where we are right now?
We were in agreement with all of the restrictions, we should buy the investment firm.
Okay, and I'm sure you're as glad as we are to see it come through finally as well. So, uh, then I'll, I'll ask that historic commission to take a vote and make a motion to approve the preservation restriction. You have already done that at a previous meeting? Oh, very good. Okay, great. All right. Then in that case, I'll entertain a motion from the select board.
I will move to approve the preservation restriction for 12 Bancroft Street.
Second.
Uh, the motion has been made and seconded, all in favor of Justine.
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So the motion passes, and I will allow you to close your meeting. Well, then enjoy your meeting. All right. Thank you very much. Oh, and did we need to discuss the? Item B. Okay, very good. All right. All right, great. So now can we set up the?
Yes, so, um, it is great news that the preservation restriction, as regards the historic aspects of the property, um, has been approved by both sides. That's wonderful, but that's not the last step in imposing the property. We already have a person's several agreements with the coast, but, um, there's a couple of other, um, conditions. Um, one is that there has to be a regulatory agreement, and my understanding is that's related to his overall housing ethics. Uh, that is still with the state, although a different agency, which is the Department of Housing Community Development, and Civic Development has been pretty cooperative, um, with, uh, with the town and the state for trying to report. That's not done yet. So right now, the, the deadline for the closing of this property with Civic Development is January 20th, that in three days. Um, the conservative estimate, uh, for getting this regulatory agreement and another box to check, so to speak, with the Department of Housing Community Development is 60 days. Um, hopefully much sooner than that, but, you know, so, uh, there's a under advisement from Attorney Taylor and Town Council is to do another extension for six days, which I will find my math is March 21st of 2023. Anything you want to add to that, Attorney Taylor?
Not too much. Uh, thanks, Greg. Um, no, just other than, you know, we've, we've been in, um, really frequent communications with the buyer's council as well. So, you know, in addition to the 60-day extension, we're prepared, you know, to do all we can on the town. You know, to do all we can on the towns and to help push this forward. Um, and and we are also exploring options actively. If if the select board. Um, wants us to to try to get this closed prior to getting the regulatory agreement back from D H C D. There are some things we can do in order to um secure the affordable units um prior to closing with it without having the regulatory agreement in hand. So. Uh, if the board wants to pursue those, we'd be happy to do that and try to close, you know, sooner than sixty days if we don't have the regulatory agreement.
What would be the benefit? What what would be the benefit to the town to do that? Um, is there really a benefit or is it just? Uh, sort of checking a box as Greg said earlier.
Um, I mean, it's it's mostly discretionary. So obviously, the town owns it owns the building right now. So it's in charge of the, you know, maintenance, security and those things. So passing title onto the buyer sooner would pass over those things. However, if the town did want to wait until the regulatory agreement was in hand. Uh, regardless of, you know, any delays that are out of the towns or the buyers control. Um, you could also go that option, but we might have to extend again. So that's the only uh thing to watch out for.
Lots of questions from many other members of the board. What is our preference here?
Uh, if if there's no real. Press to get it and sign to get it all. I I would prefer to do it all in one at one time.
I I would agree. Generally, I don't like workarounds. As I don't find that's not what it is. But um I like to all be done, it's supposed to be done.
Yeah.
And and the urgency is is not, I mean, like. We have budgeted for the maintenance for the year. It's not great. So it's longer that, you know, the voting not being turned over, civic is not doing what they're going to be doing to it. Maybe, maybe, maybe if it's another, I I feel like we're uh feel like we're on repeat here, but if it's another extension for another sixty days, then.
Then maybe we do it. That's my.
Right.
Okay, so we'll hold off for now and then. Check back in in a month and hope that we get some progress. All right. Okay.
So do you want to make the motion?
We have to, we have to move, we have to at least extend it.
Oh, yes, okay, very good. Um, then I'll entertain a motion.
For the March one first.
Correct.
Move to approve the extension of the deadline to March first twenty twenty-three for the closing and de- conveyance. For twelve Bancroft Street to consider real estate holdings LLC DBA development. With the condition that the closing occur within fifteen days of the Matthews Commission approval. Of the pertinent preservation restriction and authorize town administrator to add the extension on our behalf.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, very good.
Taylor, do you have a quick sec answer, question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, once the approvals get made and everything goes, how long do you think it will be before you're in there actually banging nails?
It's seasonally dependent, but our hope is to start construction uh before freeze up in the fall. And I think we could accommodate that regardless of of whether we're, you know, sixty days or uh sooner or later. Provided that we have ownership of the building before freeze up, we can work to be ready. Uh, the only variable that would be outstanding is the time to receive a building permit. And I I don't, having not worked in Maynard before, I don't know what the expected lead time is. But we could look into that so that we can sort of, if if it looks like we'll be on the the razor's edge, so to speak, in terms of a closing. Based on the weather, uh, then we would just plan in advance and cooperate with your building department so that we. Uh, we're maybe submitting submittals in advance of closing, perhaps. I'm sure there's a workaround for that.
Very good. All right, and I'm sure you're you're happy to hear the news from the state even more than we are.
Yes, as much as I like calling them, uh, I'm I'll be glad not to.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else on twelve Bancroft Street?
One that we give this.
All right. Because Monday, all right, very good. We will move on to item five, which is the um. Sixty-one sixty-three Summer Street Reuse Committee. So we're going to start with a a brief conversation on the charge. Um, which we still have the same draft that we've been looking at, but I think what we'll. Will want to do is make sure we set the. Level right. We don't want to put so many restrictions on this group that we box them in. Um, but we don't want, you know, just no absolute instruction whatsoever. So I think what we'll look at is drafting between now and the next meeting, which is when we plan to form the group. Um, a draft charge that will basically be along the lines of we'll ask the group to collect opinions, both from what we have now and from members of the public. Um, consider the best path forward on each of those uh potential options, including considerations such as current status of infrastructure. Uh, zoning considerations, anything else along those lines. Um, evaluate them against metrics, uh, both economic and those found in our community development principles here on the wall and the master plan. Uh, and then come back to the select board and present, as we've said, three to five of those options. Uh, and and present their work to us and we figure out the best path forward. Um, so I'll I'll. Just with that broad outline, turn it over to the rest of the board and see if there's any kind of additions. That's obviously the result of the conversation we've been having for. Um, well, over a month now. Uh, so does that sound like a reasonable charge to everybody uh that we can draft up and have? In text for the next meeting when we hope to form this group.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, very good. So we will, we will um. Solidify all the notes we see in the memo there into a charge along those lines for the group. The second um portion of forming this working group is to determine the membership. Uh, we put out a. A call for membership, actually a few calls for membership, uh, and we have in front of us. Uh, a number of applications and we've invited each of those members to come today. I will note that Armand. Uh, has decided to rescind based on the strength and just seeing that there are a number of volunteers from the community already. Uh, so we want to hear from everybody. Uh, we see some names here who we're we're familiar with, who's worked on a lot of. Committees before and we've seen some names that are new, but we wanted to give everybody a chance to come up and just. Uh, tell us why you're interested in working on this particular group, what you're um excited about working on and any skills that you can hope to bring. Uh, and we uh want to go through everybody brief. So how I'm going to run this is I'll invite everybody to speak and take about sixty seconds tops to. Um, just explain at a high level what your interest is. Uh, and we'll go right down uh the line of applicants and then we will turn it over to the board to see if there's any overall questions. Um, any questions on that process from the board as we go right through? All right, and so is uh Brian here this evening? So do you want to come on up? And this is our microphone as opposed to this one. So if you can just make sure you're in a position where you can. Hit this microphone with your voice and you should be good. Good evening. If you could start off everybody with your your name and your address.
Sure, um. Sure, my 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 name is. Who is Ryan. No, Brian. Burghouse, I am at. I'm at High Forest Street here and in in how?
You're you're under no timer, Brian, so go ahead, take your time and go ahead.
But um. Evening, and I am. Uh, 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 very interested in. Uh, in joining in its process. I I have a that's uh. A at. Background in um a a in history and I've. Also answered. I've done two other. Well, I am serving on two other. Nitties here and in town. And I. We were here really with. When I love to see the the. The building preserved in. It ends some form and I already have um. And it's not a few I. A few ideas for reuse and um. Since it's. We're really excited to start the process and see how everything. Everything. He turns out.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Um, and stay close just in case the board had any questions, but we'll we'll go right through the name. So. Uh, Danny and Schisler, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Maybe she's.
Schisler?
Yes, yes, yeah. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Could you say something again? Just we had an echo.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was just switching from my phone to my desktop. Um. Hi, folks. Uh, my name is Danny Schisler. I live at thirty Parker Street. I'm a new resident. Uh, a Maynard along with my family, uh, my wife and my nine-month-old daughter. We moved here last August. Uh, I am a member of the Maynard Tree Committee and I really enjoyed participating in that committee. And working to expand uh and protect our urban canopy in Maynard. Um, I work as um head of operations and project management at the Arnold Arboretum of Harvard University, which is a two hundred and eighty-one acre botanical garden in Boston. Um, among my responsibilities is overseeing the maintenance and preservation of over a hundred thousand square feet. Of facilities and that includes everything from historic buildings. Um, from eighteen ninety, which are a national historic landmark, and uh we also have growth facilities. Uh, research laboratories as well as research greenhouses. Uh, and some residential properties as well. I also work on uh or oversee all capital projects at the Arnold Arboretum. Um, both in the landscape and in our buildings. Uh, one of the highlight projects I'm working on now is a envelope restoration uh of our Honeywell Building, the national historic landmark that I mentioned. Uh, old brick building, very beautiful, but uh not without all of the challenges that come with that type of building. So. Um, in terms of sixty-one to sixty-three Summer Street, it's a beautiful building. Um, I'd really love to see it preserved as I'm sure so many would, and I'd love to see it help uh Maynard meet um the goals of its master plan. Including economic development, uh, education, sustainability. So. Um, I'm not too intimate with the past work of the committee, but I'd love to be a part of it. Uh, if you could use my help, let me know and I would be happy to to join. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to town.
Thanks.
Uh, Ellen Duggan.
We'll talk about a small world of Brian. I'm, some of you know, I was the dean students that you met slow, Brian, working in my office. That's we had come full circle and here we are serving on the Star Committee together here. Um, many of you, I never intended that my second career would be as volunteer, but it seems that that has happened. Happily for me, I happen to love my hometown. Um, then we've been here since eighteen ninety-two. I have served on um and am serving it presently on the. Um, historic commission on the C P C, which I think is just one of the most magnificent communities in town because it gives you a very broad knowledge of. Housing, recreation, open space, um, and historical preservation, obviously. Um, I have now just on a senior center focus group. I was on the White's on study group, obviously on the Sessi Centennial. I was on a very early master plan. I was on search committee, the two TAs and one president superintendent of schools and. Delivered meals on wheels uh in town for about twenty years. So I've enjoyed my time here. Um, I. Went to a conference as part of a historic mission um. Group a few years ago, and this one quote just has stuck in my mind and it is, if a town forgets its history. It becomes just another town. And I'm not saying that we need, I'm trying to keep a real open mind about the potential. Uh, we read the paper about the need for housing in the Commonwealth across the country, look at affordable, the numbers of. By M A P C standards, the number of seniors that will be in our town by twenty thirty-two to exceed thirty-three percent. Um, so I'm very interested and quite excited about um the possibilities of what could happen. I. I think that building the original high school on the right, the the junior high on the left and what we. Uh, call the George Washington Auditorium in the middle. It's it's quite a wonderful building and I've been hoping that. It can be, we have a lot of, you probably don't even know it, but there are a lot of school buildings and made it repurposed that are still in existence. Um, the old library, um, one of the Roosevelt School, there's a high school down on Acton Street. This building, the Garfield School uh at the corner of Great Road, it's a condo now, Great Road and Sundry Street. One very old one up on Summer Street, which is a magnificent building, a private home that was part of Stowe and then became part of me. We have a lot of school buildings that we have repurposed and reused. Um, so I'm very interested and quite excited. I I have the honor to work with Lindy on police school. It was not on the committee, but I was. Allowed to work with them and attend their meetings. So I'm I'm excited. You can see that she is also invested in this.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, Kadija Brown, am I pronouncing that correctly? Kadija.
David, my name is Kadija Brown. I live at seven Howard Road in Maynard and I'm hopefully new resident. Moving about twenty nineteen, my fiance lived in Maynard for the last thirty years and I lived in Boston and. Boston and Maynard and decided Maynard, so pleased to be here. Um, I'm a retired architect and facility management director for the Boston Public School. So this project is right down my alley, um, just like Maynard in Boston, we have several buildings from eighteen ninety-two to. Two thousand eighteen and um a lot of repurposed school. Um, you know, she mentioned earlier. And um so I I'm I'm interested in the preservation aspect, the repurposing, we. Um, I think it's most important to try to save and and a building, but I'm open to all um. All alternatives. We also, um, I'm very familiar with old school buildings, so this is, I haven't. Set foot in the building. I'm excited about that prospect and um hoping to any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Lindy Gear.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lindy Gear. I live at twenty-eight McKinley Street in Maynard. Um. I was not born in Maynard, but I was born in a town very similar to Maynard. And in my background, you see Saint Agatha Church, which was a magnificent church hand-built by. Italian stone craftsmen in my hometown and in their haste to build a C V S. They didn't preserve it and and tore it down. This wasn't even my church, but in case anyone in town is wondering. Why I'm so interested in historic preservation, it's this. You know, once something spectacular like a church or a former school is torn down, there's no recreating it. So I'm very much in in favor of historic preservation. As Ellen Duggan mentioned, um. You know, we tried to get her to be on our committee all the time and she insisted that she just wanted to be be there, but she was. Every bit a part of the committee, even though she wasn't um formally on it. Um, so my background that would apply here, I'm the former chair of the Coolidge School Working Group. That group came up with a plan on what to do with the former Bancroft uh school, the Coolidge School. Um, and I'm quite excited to see that project starting to move along. Um, I'm also on the community preservation committee. And that committee would lend a lot of insight into how other towns have handled. Historic buildings that they wanted to repurpose. So um both Ellen and I would have a a lot of insight there. But in terms of work, um, I I'm an engineer. I now do consulting. I was a former hospital administrator. But I now do consulting um on team building and leadership. So I'm really big on. Being part of collaborative teams. I'm very open-minded. I'm strategic. I like to think out of the box and see, okay, what stakeholders might we have overlooked? And how could we possibly meet their needs? I have no preconceived notions on how this building should be used. And so in that sense, I'm open to any and all ideas that make fiscal and cultural sense, and that would be good for the town. I'm also very familiar with the master plan, and I used that as my guide when I was leading the former Coolidge team. We wanted to make sure that historical things, recreation, in in that particular case, cultural issues, that they were all taken into account, so that we were building a good foundation for the future of Maynard. I thank you for considering me, and I look forward to whoever ends up on this team. It will be a fabulous team.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Dunn. Lisa, are you online?
Hi there.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lisa Dunn. I live at one eighty eight Main Street. I've been here since two thousand and two, so a little bit over twenty years. I'm a current member of the Cultural Council. And the reason I was interested in getting involved in this committee is because, as the building had been art space, as most of you know, that was a cornerstone and an anchor of our designated cultural district. And as we are now in the process of trying to revamp, revitalize, and sort of breathe new life into the cultural district, I wanted to represent the Cultural Council's sort of input to try to encourage that the reuse potentially have our cultural needs in mind, either, you know, partially on that new space or fully, and to try to reincorporate that anchor back into the cultural district in a meaningful way. Other than that, in in my workspace, I I'm not an engineer or an architect, but I am a business process improvement manager. So that's kind of getting into the nitty gritty of plans and how things work and figuring out best options. So I look forward to being a part of this and to see how we can best reuse the space that's to the advantage of the whole town.
Thank you. And finally, we have Andy Moreline.
I think people know me pretty well. Why am I interested in this particular committee? I loved that space. That was a reason that we moved to Maynard, or one of the many reasons we even knew of Maynard when we first came here. I actually don't know how many people I talked to and say, Maynard, where's that art space? Oh, yeah, you know, and and I know that that is not what this discussion is about. But I also know that that's part of my interest. Where can we, where can we keep this building in some sort of active cultural setting? That's very important to us. I'm a cold hearted, clear eyed rationalist. I've seen buildings that were not worth the time and energy to fix. I've worked on them for years. And I know what this, what this is going to cost a lot of ways. I'm curious what it's really going to cost. I've been through the building inside and out many times because I knew many artists in galleries. So I already have a familiarity with it. But I'm also really, really concerned about the best interests. And that's that's the reason I want to be on this committee. I think it's a pretty notable site, pretty important. And oh, my God, the people that we've just heard, I would be humbled to work with them and respectful if if there were so many people that needed to take this lot better than I, that I would step aside. So and I would probably still love to follow what goes in, and I would do that. That's that's my reason. Andy Moore, one twenty three Summer Street.
Thank you, Andy. And and this will be an open committee, so of course, any members of the public will be able to follow along. So and and I'll note for anybody following along at home that each each of those applicants, and thank you for all the applicants for filling out the application form, which obviously gives us a wealth of information before you even sat down and introduced yourself. So that that helps us as well. We discussed at our last meeting that we would put out the last call for applicants and review them and invite the members to speak or the potential applicants to speak, but not make any decisions tonight. So the what we discussed was making a decision on the formation at our next meeting. And we have not determined even the size of the group right now, but I think I'm glad to see that we have diversity of skill sets and experience levels, both with the town and with different aspects of the project. So I think we'll be in a good place to select a very strong group to help us determine the best use of this very important building for the town. I'll open it up to the board to see if there are any questions, either for specific applicants or in general about the process or comments on on how we want to move forward.
My comments are I'm overly impressed with everybody's thoughts and comments. And the one question I would have, and I'm not putting my thoughts into this at all, but it seemed like if not everybody, everybody had some form of retention of the current structure. And I'm wondering if that would in any way bar consideration of other potential opportunities that may benefit the town that just are distasteful to some of us because it would require, you know, demolition of the building. And if so, would that take away a potential opportunity for our community? And again, I'm not reflecting my own thoughts because I know what I want, or what I would, I shouldn't say that. I I know what I would desire. But perhaps an alternative is the better option. So for members of the committee, whoever wants to speak up, the members of the applicants, the applicants who we heard from, whoever wants to speak up, what are your thoughts on that? Would you be able to explore reasonably? And if it turns out that, you know what, best interest of the community might be X, and it's not really what you had desired, speaking here this evening, or thought about for months since this came up, would you be able to do that?
Lisa, please go ahead.
My my personal opinion is that I think anyone who's been in town for a while and knowing the significance of that building, yes, would love to save it. But if realistically, financially, structurally, that's not possible, my interest would at least be to see if future building on that, it's like future construction would still be as some sort of community space benefiting the town, some sort of an additional plus for the community. I I will be blunt and honest in saying I would not like to see that space sold to a developer and turned into condos. I would love to see the space benefit the community in some way, shape, or form, even if it meant it had to be new construction.
Thank you, Lisa. I see Lindy's hand up.
I feel the same way as as Lisa. I'm not wedded. I'm not wedded to any one particular use. Clearly, I see the value of historic buildings. But if the select board wanted us, for example, to bring forward two recommendations, one on what we would do with maintaining the building, what our suggestion would be, and the other being our suggestion, if it was torn down, those could be two viable alternatives for you to consider. And and my knowledge from the Coolidge Project, too, it it's not the building that's valuable. No developer makes a whole lot of money on renovating old buildings. That's why you see them renting them for a long period of time and then finally selling them. It's the land that the building is on that is the most valuable. So I'm I'm very open to a lot of different things.
Thank you. I I will note that in our previous discussions, select word in variations on the charge is asking for three to five options. I don't think more would be as big of a challenge, but we definitely want to see what some of the different creative thought sees that the the working group comes up with.
Even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny.
Yeah, I I have to echo the thoughts that have been shared already and just say that the the needs of the town have to guide the process ultimately. And, you know, it's not an all or nothing situation with historic preservation. There may be portions of the building that could be preserved to educate the public, while other parts of the property could be, we'd have new construction reused for other uses. It's a problem I grapple with in my job all the time. We have a historic eighteen twenties farmhouse. That's also a national historic landmark that is mothballed. And, you know, we're dealing with the the potential costs of rehabilitating that building just to bring it up to occupiable standards, and it's enormously expensive. So these are challenging decisions, but ultimately, the needs of the town and the resources that we have need to need to guide the the options and the eventual preferred option.
Thank you.
I think I agree with that, too.
Ellen, would you mind coming up just so we can hit the microphone? Because I know we we get complaints if we don't get some volume.
I think I'm very open minded as well. I, you know, I I like to repurpose a building, but you can see so many needs in it. And I think the charge of the committee, as I read it, was to to look for people with backgrounds in architecture and real estate and preservation and cultural. So it sounded like you were looking for people who could suggest a lot to you as well, and not just the preservation of the building. So I think this group, I'm kind of impressed to be among them. So I I think I can definitely keep an open mind on the use of the building.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room, please?
I'd like to point out that Maynard's not unique across the country when it comes to reusing schools and and the alternatives have to be way realistic. It has to be your unique situation, your your funds, as well as the opportunities in the town for growing housing or growing economically or or keeping the art, you know, theme of Maynard. So I I would say I definitely would like to see the building preserved, but it's definitely open to maybe a partial demolition. You know, different different options. And and as previously stated, we should be bringing up three to five different alternatives, completely different alternatives that everyone can weigh in. And and I think that's the the fun of it.
Thank you.
I think that was, that's my, and I kind of want to echo a little bit of what David said. I want to make sure that the committee, when they when they bring forward these options, that it's not, and I know, Lindy, when you were on the Coolidge School one, it was you brought forward an option, the option that your committee felt was the option to go with. And I think what we're, what I'm looking for is more of these are three to five different ways you could go with no ranking, no, yes, I want this one over this one or whatever. It's more to present the possibilities to us, and then we can go from there, is kind of my thought on it.
That makes sense, Justine. And just to, because it's been a long time. Our team did originally come up with eight different options, which we narrowed down to six and shared with the board, and it was we had looked at financial perspective, you know, a financial prospectus on each affordable housing, recreation, the pros and cons of each of the the different options. And then from there, the select board had given us they had asked us to go back and recommend the the option that our team felt best. So we did have a broad range of options, but we brought forth the the final one based upon what we were asked to do. And and I think any team, it's ultimately up to the select board.
Did anybody else want to respond to David's question? Or did anybody else on the board want to make another question or comment? All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, we will revisit this at the next meeting. And once again, I just want to thank all the applicants, very impressed by all the skills that that you are potentially going to be bringing in this group. So I think we'll we'll have a really strong team when we form, and I'm looking forward to see what you guys all come up with. So thank you very much. All right. We will move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. There are three items, a liquor license transfer for Magnolia in the location of the former China Ruby. There is congratulations for an Eagle Scout, the Court of Honor, of which was this weekend, which Justine attended. And then the fifty seventh holiday parade. And so I will open it up to any questions or comments on any of those consent agenda items.
A liquor license issue is just, we've already approved the transfer, but is this coming back from the state now that we have to approve it?
Exactly.
I did have occasion to go to the Court of Honor on Sunday and presented, actually read the proclamation. But I actually, I held it back because the date that we made the Nathan Strauss Day was actually supposed to be for today. So the date's wrong on the proclamation. So we'll just sign it.
Just to be clear, because it's a little confusing. You would like
Yes.
the date of the proclamation to be Nathan Strauss Day.
Today.
Today, although his court of honor was.
That was, that is correct, because we gave him today as as his.
Got it.
So.
Got it.
But he and they're they're very, they're very happy. It's again, they they do a great job for the town. Boys come to a great job, and and the Eagles work very hard for a lot of different organizations in town. So so I was happy to do that.
His service project was cleaning up the Fowler.
Yes, the courtyard in Fowler. So I've had seventy six hours of volunteer work to get that coordinated, and and they cleaned it up and made it a nice usable space, you know, it got a little ugly over the years. And so they they beautified it. Which is great.
Very nice. And my congratulations as well. Very good. So we'll we'll make sure we have it allocated today to anybody else and then assuming that.
I've always found it, you know, I've done it for years, that we give these Court of Honor awards, and then we say, you know, that we proudly announce that today is, you know, Greg Johnson Day, and it's four o'clock in the afternoon, and they didn't know that it was their day until four o'clock in the afternoon. So.
Yes, that's why I gave him today. You know, he had to go back to school today, but that's okay.
So then, Mr. Chair, could I ask that you or that the body, when you approve the agenda that you add digital signatures could be it is already in the perfect. Very good. All right. Any other comments? And we have Brad as well. Forgetting soft versus not actual versus for right. Not from the DPW. All right, very good. Any questions on any consent agenda items? All right, I'll entertain a motion noting, well, it's already there with the digits.
Move to approve the consent agenda items A through C as presented, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Very good. All right, we will move on to item seven, which is a carry in license for video signals. Video signals already has the appropriate alcohol beverage license to do B Y O B sort of events for their pottery. What this is asking is if we're going to be able to waive the common victual victular license requirement for a carry in alcoholics. I think this is something maybe they should have had, but we need to put into place now. So they don't do any food. It's simply the B Y O B. Good evening. And so wanted to, this isn't a standard acting, but just want to put it up here for any discussion, see if there's any if we wanted to grant them their waiver. That's correct, Mr. Chair, and now council has advised that we do be clear about why we're waiving this particular requirement, which is not a safe requirement. It's a, it is a stipulation condition of the town's alcoholic beverages policies. So it's up to the discretion of the lighting authority, which is the select board. As Greg Wilson, in fact, he's a system Greg Wilson, period, had done, had due diligence in researching this, had found that, and you noted, Mr. Chair, video signals has been issued a carry an alcohol license in the past, but it not been issued a common visual license. So we're trying to correct that, and by waiving that particular, because of precedent, so to speak. And there's a number of reasons. One, primarily because they were in condition, it issued it in the past. Two, that's my, that's not their business models, unlike function hall or otherwise. I've been in video signals, my little girl's been doing a birthday in the back, you know, like they they make pottery, rent videos. They are not a function hall. They don't serve food. They don't prepare food. They, you can, they just, well, whatever the beverage may be, but it's it's just not their roles. And I, and so I've been recommending. it's just not their roles. And I and so I've been recommending that it does waive this particularly required. But with the consideration that that this waving, unless the board would like to change the policy, now on does not set a new precedent, so to speak, right? So I I do recommend that the board consider unless it works otherwise, to to consider waivers as as applied. I don't suspect it's going to come up very often. The signals seem to be the only exception that I'm aware. But that's that's town council's advice. It's just to be clear as to the reason rationale, which our notes could probably just are mid to probably like I just said. Very good. Yeah, I'll note this has been a longstanding downtown business and we want our downtown business to succeed. And we did check that the chief, there's been no issues associated with the BYOB portion of the license that came up when we checked there. So yeah, we'll open it up for comment from the board.
I have a few questions, just because I recognize long in business, et cetera, but I feel like we have, and I guess to have a better understanding of common victular in general. Because I know that I think that, you know, the smoothie place needed to get one, Jersey Mike's got one, you know, when we said. So these places that are kind of in and out type of places all had to get them as well. So so or or chose to get them. So I I don't know why we would say.
They're serving, they're they're prepared to do that, though. Those are particular examples?
Yeah.
Anywhere anywhere where they sell an item is my understanding of the common vic. And for, you know, Jersey Mike's, they might get an entertainment license to play a radio, which we require to have a TV in the in the room, which is outside the scope of what they're doing as a business model. But for a restaurant typically a common vic is almost standard.
Right, it's it's so from my understanding, it's really, I've been trying to research, you know, fundamentally, what's the point of a common victular license, which is really for the purposes of the establishment of preparing and serving food on site? So for businesses that don't do that at all, such as video signals, it's hard to be, it's hard to see how that would necessarily apply to them since they're not in the business of the parent and serving food on site. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm my thoughts are the past practice aspect is I don't want to be punitive in any way by saying, oh, we missed it. So now you have to start. I do want to make sure that we don't open up the door for any other in the future, as Greg said, that we sort of make it clear if we don't need to have the common vic license, which is what, what is it, like twenty bucks a year or something like that? If we don't need to have the common vic for video signals, then we need to change the policy in some way. And that's a different issue. May I ask how this came up?
Just searching through files, trying to, you know, see how things were done in the past, look at what, you know, look at what the requirements are. And I just happened to notice, hey, this this app, it's even on the application that says a victular license is required for a year and check the records. They've never had one before. So that's how this whole.
And also, Mr. Chair, it's Megan's Muto, Assistant Town Administrator at Home. We we also, there was another application from a different business that had requested a carryout license that when we, when, you know, Greg and I were kind of working to figure it out, we went through the the board's policies and saw that it said you need to have a common victular license for one year. And this business hadn't been here that long, so they they didn't have it for a year. So we didn't bring it to you because they didn't meet that requirement. So I just want to kind of bring that to your attention, too.
Thank you.
Maybe it's the policy itself that needs to be changed. As far as, you know, if 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 there are businesses that are not, you know, because I can think of other businesses in other towns that, you know, again, similar to what what video signal is proposing that wouldn't be preparing food on site. So, you know, maybe there's some kind of addendum that, you know, if a if a common victory but license is required, then it must be in good standing for at least a year. If not, you you know, if no food is being prepared, that is not required, but doesn't preclude you from a carry out like.
Shouldn't it be a carry in?
Carry in life. Yes.
Well, could you just distinguish what you're proposing that's different from the current policy, just so I make sure I understand you?
Is that you've established a fact that some people, that that some businesses are allowed to have, basically to to say what we're about to say. Some businesses that don't require food preparation, that they don't have onsite food preparation, hence not needing a common vic license, could still get a carry in pulse, a carry in permit.
But they would still need the alcohol license to do that.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, I agree with that, but I'm just saying like right here, it says that we can't, like right here, I feel like we're making them get a common vic license when technically a common vic license isn't what.
You're saying to drop the whole requirement?
If it's not required of that business.
Okay.
Does that make?
Yeah, I I I think we need to take up the policy separately, review the entire policy at one time, separate outside of this and talk about where the changes might be.
But I I want to go back to the town administrator because you did say you recommend making sure that we describe why so that we could still enforce this for other businesses in the particular case. Sorry. But I also agree that you should have probably a separate discussion. There might be, I haven't looked at the entirety of the alcohol. I really appreciate Greg catching that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Greg, that shows that you're paying attention. So thank you.
That was a tough.
Uh, so.
I would have one other question.
Yeah.
For. There's a place I always thought, and obviously erroneously, that a place that sold like a bag of M and M's is required to have a common vic.
So that's what I also want to catch. I I'm not, I'm not looking at the definition of a common victory. Yeah, right now, I think it is more than just your parent, your, my, here's, I don't option, give my guess at to what kind of thing, it may be limited or maybe defined as if you're selling food.
That's what I thought it was. And that that means we have to make sure that not only are they not preparing food, but that they don't say, oh, you want a bag of M and M's, you know, we've got these, and they sell them for ten cents because they buy them at BJ's. They're now, they're now subject to a common vic. And that's limiting their business if indeed they do have a little pile of candy that's there that they sell periodically. And I would think if they have people coming in at night to do pottery or whatever it happens to be, they might sell that type of.
That's true. So but the this, I as I'm bringing the motion, move to waive the common victory license requirement for coming to be granted to be in order to be granted a carry in alcohol. It's not saying that like if they if they do anything that requires common victory license, they should, they need to go buy.
They need to do it.
They're just saying for the purpose of carrying alcohol, they won't have it. But if they sell that M and M bag.
Yeah, so my proposal would be, my suggestion would be that we allow this through the rest of this year, since we are into this year already, and presumably they haven't purchased a common vic because we've approved all the licenses. They haven't had to do this. And then we analyze what they actually have there, see if they need one. And then next year, if they need one, we begin making sure they are properly licensed.
All right, so we'll waive the common vic now is what you're proposing. We will make sure that they understand whether or not they need to come and back and make sure they come and ask us for one if they need one. And then at some future date, we'll revisit the policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So that means tonight's action would simply be the motion that's recommended, unless there's any other questions or comments from the board. Chris, did you have anything to add?
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
How do we confirm through the motion? Somebody looking back on this historically that if town council wants us to identify the purposes to ration out what we're doing, that will be captured in the minutes as opposed to playing the motion?
I think that's, I would say that just the minutes are probably close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that we have accommodated at work. We have to make sure we accommodate town councils.
Yes.
And chat.
And are we going to edit the motion so it's going to be moved away with the common vic license requirement for the remainder of twenty twenty three?
Yes.
To be reevaluated for twenty twenty four.
Yes, I would agree.
You're getting that correct.
Thank you. My second.
For video signals, they're granted a carry in alcoholic beverage license.
Any, all right, any more discussion before we? All right, if we're done with the discussion, somebody wants to make a clean motion.
I will move to waive the common victory license requirement for the remainder of twenty twenty three to be reevaluated for twenty twenty four for video signal to be granted a carry in alcoholic beverage license.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, very good. So we'll see that topic again. All right, the Charter Review Committee, we have the chair here with us this evening. I am the select board. He is on. What we're looking to do is set up the next step, which is a public hearing. And Mr. Coleman, good evening. How are you today?
How are you?
I'm I'm doing well. Do you want to give us an overview of what the ask is for today?
All right, part of the requirement that we have is, let me just back up a little bit. In November, we submitted our report to the town clerk along with a copy of the charter with our changes on it as well as a, whether you call it a red line or a marked up changes, so you could track the changes that we are suggesting to the charter. After that date, which was on November tenth, the select board has three months in order to call a public hearing to review these changes. And also then it has to be held within four months of that. So you have basically until February tenth to call meeting and up to March tenth in order to actually hold the the public hearing on that. So that is what we are here tonight for you to decide on the date to have the public hearing and you know, make the announcement. And then at some point, it has to be advertised.
Very good. And I think the the logic behind the day is we want it kind of later in the window, so it's closer to town meeting, but not at the absolute last available date, which is the first March, like we're meeting. So we backed one up and that's February twenty first. So that's what proposing.
Does that give us enough time to advertise? Yes, because I'm, we have
Two weeks.
You have two week requirement? Yep, sounds good.
Any questions on the proposed public hearing for the town charter revisions?
Will that be a joint meeting of the charter commission or is that required just to be us viewing it in a public hearing? I don't remember when we did it ten years ago. Bill, do you know?
I I don't recall. In fact, I thought it was that the Charter Review Committee called the public hearing. But when we got the timeline from town council, she stated that the select board would call the public hearing. And I think in the past, it had been sort of a standalone public hearing. But from the communication I've had with with Greg is that it would be part of your select board meeting.
That's frankly for convenience, but the the but so if you don't want that, you can do a special I think it's a good idea to invite the town charter review committee at a minimum. Join me, it might be the worst idea either because there might be, you know, comments from the public that maybe the town charter review committee would be better to answer than this.
Certainly for rationale purposes as to how and why the decision was made to make.
Yeah.
I read through the changes. Thank you very much, Bill. Great job as far as.
You're welcome. I mean, if you just allow me a moment to just say, we've had a very good committee, a very, a committee made up of very strong personalities, which unlike trying to herd kittens in the case, this was a little bit more to try to get everybody to focus and come to a consensus on the agreement there. Because it's just, like I said, very strong personalities, people who believe in, you know, what they think. And I think that is very good that we we took a longer time than I thought we would to go through it. But it was the kind of thing where we hashed things out, we just we discussed it, you know, debated different items. And I think we came up with a very good document and changes that made sense. I think in our report, we said we didn't want changes just for change sake. We wanted them to be basically to help the process or to help it to become a clearer process.
And Bill, thank you for shepherding this and the other strong personalities on that committee as we we work through that charter. Your your organizational skills and your your ability to bring consensus has been invaluable towards the work of that committee.
No, thank you.
Were you one of those strong personalities?
I can't, I can only guess who Bill's talking about, but I suspect that maybe perhaps. All right. I'm not. Very good. Any other questions on the motion in front of us? All right, well.
So actually, I do have a question. So are we going to, so we'll move to approve the public hearing?
Yeah.
And then invite the Charter Review Committee to attend.
Yes. And I I know Bill was already planning to attend himself. Certainly send the invite along.
And and if I can add, I I mean, the committee was basically saying, yeah, we they'd either would join in through Zoom or would attend. I think I would plan on attending your meeting to be there in person. Think it would work better, you know, trying to go through any questions or whatever that people might have or bring up. But it's just the kind of thing, I guess the question is, and we, given the timeframe of it, whether we post it as a joint meeting and whether it would be incumbent on me that I would have to also post a meeting or how would that be handled?
So if you post a meeting, allowing you to deliberate in public, one could argue that if you're invited, the members of the of the town charter review are offering their opinion publicly at a publicly posted meeting, and you're not delivering, you're not taking votes. However, council will probably tell me to be on the safe side. We should have a publicly posted meeting from the from the town charter review committee that is listed at the joint meeting, just as, just like we did with this. And then you and then you'd be required to submit minutes or reflect in your specific body following that meeting.
Okay.
Even if closer taken, you just still say we discussed, et cetera, et cetera, with the slide board adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the scheduled public hearing on February twenty first, twenty twenty three to receive comments for amendments to the town charter.
All in favor? Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you, Bill, and we'll see you on the twenty first.
All right, all right, thank you.
Yes, um.
I will say that when I became chair, one of the first things I got was an email from, I think it was Jack McKean telling me, just just don't forget that the town charter is coming up and it needs to be reviewed.
As soon as we finish, we'll we'll send that email out for the next tense.
It's every ten years, so.
All right. Item item nine is a COLAT increase for from the Retirement Administration Commission. Greg, do you want to set this one up? Yeah, right. So per the memo on board docs from PERACT, which is Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission and also through the town's own major retirement board. In November twenty twenty two, Governor Baker signed a law that allowed retirement boards to increase the cost of living adjustment from three percent to five percent. That is what our board, our retirement board is also recommending. I had asked the retirement board what might be the financial implications of this per Ken Morris, who's the director, I guess, title of the major charter board. He says we would not need additional funds from the town to fund this increase. It would be funded by the legislature. Going forward, it would become a part of the charity's benefit. And any future funding will be determined by the state actuary to become part of the funding schedule. He doesn't anticipate an increase in the FY twenty four provision. So just for a little more context, similar to other outside entities that provide services to town, like the asset that vocational school, the retirement board submits an assessment, an invoice, if you will, to the town for for the purposes of program, the retirement pensions, et cetera. So he's he's saying in this email that that there's this won't change, that they'll be able to fund that goal, which I'm fine with.
And how about going forward, the future years?
It's a good question. So as he points out, the state actuary, who are the people that determine what what your what your pension costs are, then yeah, that'll be a factor amongst whatever the other factors are. But at least throughout by twenty four, it seems like it's going to be, it's going to be captured already, which is good. it's going to be captured already, which is good. I mean, in, in general, as you'll see in a couple of days with my budget message, costs are going up and it's not, it's, it's not that surprising that, that, you know, instead of trying to be.
I was surprised to see, first off, I think it's, it's, it's not, it's not five percent per se across the board, because there's, there's triggering aspects of it from the way I read the thing. And it's only, I say only, but it's fifteen thousand dollars is the impact?
Yes, it's on the fifteen thousand dollar base.
That's right. So he says, Ken DeMars, Executive Director in Retirement Board, says, this added two percent, so again, to go from three to five, on the COLA base of, then the COLA basis is fifteen thousand dollars. That is the, that is the increase will be, that is, the increase will be on all retiring benefit if the annual amount is fifteen dollars or less, and only on the first fifteen thousand dollars for those who benefit is higher than fifteen thousand dollars. The highest increase would be three hundred dollars for the year. Not substantial, but again, it's, I'm not looking at the math for how many retirees we happen to have on the, on this plan, but. I'll roll.
COLA bases typically go between, I think it's over thirteen thousand to eighteen thousand, so Maynard is kind of right in the middle of our sector.
Just something to be concerned about as, you know, obviously I'm, I'm not looking to, to impact retirees and their pension and everything else. We have to do what we can to take care. But to be concerned about future budgets and the impact on the future budgets. This year we're good. Next year we may not be.
That's right. So, and, and if he's, if he's, I mean, I believe him, and I'm confident in Ken, when he says there's going to be no change in, in what FY twenty four corporation is, but you know, FY twenty five, I know that's like a year and a half.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's fair. May have been inevitable, I mean, but just.
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the proposed COLA increase? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the retiree COLA increase from three percent to five percent as outlined in the memo from Public Employment Retirement Administration Commission, PERA, and by the Executive Director of the Maynard Retirement Board.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, very good. Item ten, we have two contracts. The first is a change order for three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for a fence over with the schools and that is funded as part of a CPC appropriation. Greg, do you want to add anything?
There was some additional crowdfunding in its relationship. And the original appropriation is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which was appropriated at how many twenty twenty two. So this is still in that appropriation. It's cool, you know, it's on school grounds, so school committee endorses as well.
And that money came from CPC.
Yes.
Any questions on the change order here?
I'll move to approve the change order estimate four one one zero with Boston Hill Fence for the Keenan Field Fence Project in the amount of three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The second contract is a successful grant application from our Green Community Status by our DPW Director for Town Hall Weatherization in the amount of six thousand eight hundred, I'm sorry, sixty eight thousand eight hundred dollars and change. Greg, would you like to add anything to that one? So?
We've been maximizing, my opinion, and I've documented, we've been, we've been maximizing our Green Communities application every year. We, we sit under LED lights, I think, in every single building. The, this, the building is being heated right now by a boiler system that will install through pre-heat. Fantastic, like we've been maximizing. So this is the native building, looking at the weatherization capacity of this building, I think we probably need a new roof. But, you know, with, into that, this, I'm just really proud of the town, particularly Public Works, Justin Marco, who's our beauty grant administrator, does a lot of work. The board approves the reporting every year to that. I'm just thrilled that we continue to, like, take advantage of that designation.
And one comment I would make is looking back on history, when Green Communities was initially proposed to as an opportunity, Maynard was one hundredth town in the Commonwealth, I think, to, to actually approve it. First was Newton, we were the hundredth, they had a big celebration when we, when we approved it. And the point I wanted to make is it was controversial here in Maynard, in that some people thought that it was restrictive, it was going to be causing a lot of issues relative to people's ability to do things with their homes and et cetera, et cetera. And I was a strong proponent of it because of the opportunities that it opened up, and we have now gotten well over a million dollars in money from the Green Communities Act. So the voters need to be thanked. And, you know, just the confidence in the fact this was good for Maynard. But, yeah, we had a big celebration of the mayor, I'm trying to remember his name, he ran for governor, but he was here in Maynard at the library when we had our celebration of the one hundredth town to adopt the Green Communities Act.
I'm actually surprised even by sixteen thousand dollars, not having a negative amount of money, but since we've been pretty much maximizing it every year, they, they, they don't, you know, we've, we've gotten our piece of the pie many times in the past, and so the state is trying to, there's a lot of towns who have not been. I had to get sixty eight thousand dollars, that.
Questions? All right.
I'll move to, go ahead.
Nope.
I'll move to approve, authorize the town administrator to approve the contract with the Department of Energy Resources, DOE R. Green Communities Division for Town Hall Weatherization in the amount of sixty eight thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars and authorized in Justin DiMarco, DPW Director of Opera Signatory.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Moving on to item eleven, we are revisiting the municipal naming policy as we discussed at the last meeting. Two simple changes here. We're going to remove the requirement for a newspaper, newspaper posting and the public hearing requirement instead of the normal Select Board meeting. So it would come straight through the application, just like we saw with David Mark last week or at our last meeting, rather. Greg, did I capture that correctly?
Oh, that's it. I, I added one more while I was looking at it. Which is, you can see the red line version in, in board docs. Because I remember when David Mark was talking about, and this is a good question, like, okay, so we, so we renamed something. Typically, there's a sign put on that property. We can't pay for that sign. What's that look like? What's the project? And so I, I added that, 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 those details should be presented to the board. David Marks had done that, it was part of.
Good catch.
Well, I, I have an interesting question, and I obviously, I was not around when this policy. I was not in the boardroom, this policy was, was approved. But is there a reason? Is it possible to name something that's not a person's name with this policy? If you want to name a park, something, but it's not an actual person, like if you want to name it Veterans Memorial Park, or, or if you want to name it, you know, Volant Hero or, or whatever. Right, so if I'm reading this policy this way, it doesn't actually fit like that. So I'm just curious, is there another mechanism for that, or is this just a mechanism for using people's names?
This was intended, it was back during the period of time, the, the beginnings of the rumblings of removal of various statues and names of, of various things throughout the country that were, that were upsetting people. And so there was, that, that's what generated my recollection to the discussion. And then there was one in, one member of the public who came forward and wanted to, to name a park. It's like, well, wait a minute, you know, we need to have some type of a policy. So it was strictly names that was, names of individuals that was discussed at that time. But that's a good point, that we don't have, we wanted to name something after, you know, Maynard. Well, I think we did it last week. We, we suggested, two weeks ago, we suggested the name of the, the place, the historical, you know, Marble Farm Historical Site or something.
Not, not Marble, the Marble.
Yeah.
That's true. And this, this is not that clear, to your point, Justine. It does say honorary.
Yeah.
So it's not, you know, groupie.
I'm just thinking of, like, if, you know, in the future, if we're going to recognize, I know David you had spoken to a, a few years ago, is, you know, our, you know, honoring indigenous peoples or, or something like that. If, if there were an opportunity to acknowledge a park or something, this, we wouldn't really be able to do that with this. So I'm just curious, like, do we need to?
I think it just needs to be amended in some way. We have to look at it and.
Oh, that's good. There's, there's no necessary urgency to this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the proposed revisions or the policy overall?
My comment would be relative to, I guess, public hearing was done with the intent of of making sure that if there were objections that we were unaware of, that people had the opportunity to come and express those. Now, I guess they could still do that at a regular, at a regular selectment meeting, so that is taken care of, because the five members of the board, when we have a full board, don't necessarily know history of individuals or what have you. And the public hearing was intended to give an opportunity to to publicize it, that, hey, this is happening. So it's not just something that's posted on the agenda, but rather posted publicly that this is happening.
So absolutely, that.
That was the purpose of the public hearing, because it required public.
This does, this does, that, I believe the spirit of that, although just newspapers just aren't as popular. So we do that mostly at legal obligations, and this doesn't have a legal obligation, legal obligation. What it does say is, after the Select Board approved, you know, so item D under the process, the Select Board goes to approve the name and make it or who will fund naming rights in the project. E, notice and attempt to name a park or a nation, so the town or community or commemorative naming of a street shall be posted in public places for a period of thirty days, during which time the public comments will be accepted after the thirty day public comment period. The request will be placed on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled Select Board meeting for the boards.
Yeah, okay. That, that's, that, that.
That's really the website, right?
Yeah.
We, we put everything up.
We, we did, while considering similar, considering, considering similar, while considering similar things in the town charter where it was posted on a newspaper or something, moved that to the website, which is a more frequently used information source for town business. So we could call that out explicitly now that we're not making a motion on this tonight, if you, for the website specifically, David, if that would help.
Greg, I have a question, Greg.
Yeah.
Is, is there not a form that goes with this and that there's a sponsor for each person or entity that wants to have something named in their honor? And to David's point, the five members of the board who may not, may not have a history, it's up to the sponsor of an individual to be named or have a, have something named in their honor. It's up to them to educate us as to the person's history and why they deserve the honor that some people think they deserve. Because, you know, none of us, none of us knew who Soup Campbell was before his family members and, at the time, you know, Becky provided us all the information of his, his past, and then we agreed and voted, and now we have the Soup Campbell Room downstairs. But isn't there a form that goes with that to?
Yes. Yeah, and so, and to your, to your, your question, then I, I, this is part of the process too. The criteria is, well, there's a couple criteria, but the spirit of the criteria is to, you know, successfully advocate compelling facts or circumstances that would justify the ongoing recognition, and then, and then things afterwards. Full name, date of residency, verifiable service date, and here we are, the narrative as to the extraordinary circumstances or achievements on which the request is based. The, it's not, yeah, it does have, you know, that's to be significant.
Excellent. Chris, I did have the pleasure and honor of knowing Soup Campbell. When I first joined the board, he was the Veterans Agent, and I knew him, and he was a gentleman and a wonderful man.
His picture is downstairs? In this.
Yeah, his, his image is.
Yep. So a question about the municipal naming nomination form that, that Chris just referenced. At the bottom, it says, please complete and return at Selectman's Office, return by December thirty first of the current year to ensure action prior to annual, next annual town meeting.
I did say that I was going to update.
Yes. All right, I just want to reach out, I wasn't missing, yeah, just with the politics, wait a minute.
I want to be one and then the other.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
All right.
Sorry.
Any other questions on the policy or instructions? We'll see this again clearly.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Greg, you understood everything we just said?
Yeah, no, no, all good. I think, yeah, I'll come back with the board with them to try to capture.
All right.
On a read.
Very good. All right, no, no motion on that. So we will move on to item twelve. There is a quest, a request from Chris to revisit the broker services proposal that we approved at our last meeting for the old fire station, one summer street. Chris, would you like to give an overview of your concern here?
Yeah, my, my only concern is that during the meeting, I asked the question directly, if O'Brien Commercial Properties, you know, if there was such a thing as a named exceptions clause in, in these type of agreements, and the answer was no. And that is not a truthful answer, in my opinion. And if that's the first question asked of this person or these people, and the answer is an untruthful answer, is that really somebody we want to go and do business with? It's my opinion. That's, and I, I don't think we should, but I, I, I just think that, you know, the question was asked point blank, plain and simple, you know, in English, so everyone could understand it, and he told us something that wasn't true.
All right, so we have done a small amount of research. We, just the options, I'm not suggesting we take any of these necessarily, but could ask O'Brien to amend the current agreement, or we could try to back out of the agreement right now within a certain timeframe and simply cut the brokerage agreement. I, for my own perspective, I'm, I'm a bit nervous about doing either of those after we had already approved it. I, I did go back and listen to tape. My impression was that the question they were responding to is not the general form of that template, but the specific one that we were voting on that night, and that, that one did not have that clause. And I believe neither did any of the other ones from the other brokerage firms that submitted proposals. And so those, those, the answer to the question in that format, does this particular contract, I think, was truthful. So I, I'm not sure that they were interpreting the question, Chris, as do these sorts of contracts in general have it as opposed to the particular one in front of us. But that was, that was my interpretation of the discussion from the last meeting.
We, we can agree to disagree on what they, how they interpret it, because, I mean, it's, you know, I, I, I didn't say, you know, I did not say, does this particular contract have that, such a clause? I said, do you, you know, does, do your contracts have a clause, or can you add a clause, you know, somewhere, that type of language? I thought it was pretty clear that I was asking, you know, is that something that they do as a brokerage? And that, they said no, and, and, you know, it, it's not something that's done, and it is something that's done, and.
My thought, and I was, the question that I heard you ask, Chris, was if one of, and you were basically mentioning three, three individual developers in Maynard that are already knowledgeable about the property and don't have to be marketed. So if they are the ones that end up getting this, this award, should we owe the broker's fee? And a hearing that we can have an exception, if we want to identify specific parties, namely the three that Chris referenced, I think we probably should, because they're not doing any work to bring the attention to these. We, we want to, the reason they're getting a four percent is because they went over and above what we could do on our own. And we don't have to do anything to get the three individuals that I think Chris was referencing to know, to have knowledge about this particular property. So why should they get rewarded? Because that is the winning bid. So why should they get rewarded? Because that is the winning bid. So. The exclusion clause naming those three. Uh, I don't have a problem with because I do believe that those people know of the property without being marketed. Uh, but I want to have, the reason that I voted for this is because I want to have the opportunity to stretch our. Our tentacles far enough out, we're not just playing with the typical, uh, developers. We have an opportunity to reach out to those beyond the typical three. Or beyond even Maynard and beyond the region and try to get maybe somebody who would never have heard about this. We don't have the ability to advertise in such a way to get them to, but the broker does. So I, uh, I think it's important to, from that perspective, to have the broker. But I also think from Chris's question, um, the fact that if one of those three, the three, and, and Greg, you had a term for them, but.
I said the usual system.
The usual, if the usual suspect are one of the, are, are the winning bidder. We, they've done no work to gather them in. And that's my frustration.
So I, I have a couple of questions. So the first is, would it be possible to. Create an RFP that would include it in their bid would be the four percent.
Yes.
They would pay for that. So then the town actually would not pay for that.
Oh, the town doesn't pay for it. The town just gets four percent less than what they may have, uh, bid otherwise. So, but, but you, in, you know, I'm gonna look to Megan in a second. Um, my understanding from being in my conversation with town council is you, you try to be. Kind of clear or explicit in that sort of understanding within the, with the bidders' better proposals. And you say, with the understanding that four percent of this is gonna go to the, uh, broker if you're not a named exception. You know, what's your, what's your tactic, what's your breakable?
So are you, I just want to understand what Justine's suggestion is. Are you suggesting that one of those three usual suspects bids that they would have to pay four percent extra?
No.
All, all of it. So anyone who bids on the, on the RFP. So.
Right now, that is because there's no.
Right. Okay. So that would be included. That was, that was.
But that comes off of our.
It would, we can structure the RFP two ways. One, give us the total and then four percent gets knocked off, or. Two, give us the town share and then the four percent would go to O'Brien. So we can structure the RFP either way, and we would make sure that all the applicants followed that format. So.
That sounds right. Megan, is that your understanding?
Yes, yep. The concern with council was that we wanted to make sure, um, that if, if the board decided to go. With a named exception clause, that there wouldn't be. A financial advantage to the named exception, so that everyone would be compared equally. Um, based on the merits of, you know, whatever they proposed. So I think the way it was just described as, okay, what is your number? And then put the four percent or, or nothing. But, well, yeah, we'd have to figure it out because you, you just. We can't, um. I'm not describing this well, but we need to make sure it's an even playing field for everyone in the RFP is what I'm trying to get across.
That makes sense.
Yes, you, so you would, would take. You would take the, um, the, the two or three, however, whatever the named exceptions you are. You name them upfront. We have to, we have to tell somebody who the, who we would consider. As a community, as, as, you know, who the named exceptions are, provide them to whoever the broker is. And if it remains O'Brien, it remains O'Brien and, and tell them, these are our examples of named exceptions. But from there, they have to follow the exact same process as anyone else. The only difference is at the end of the day, if one of those three named exceptions becomes a winning bidder. O'Brien doesn't get the, the, that piece.
That's correct.
So the question I have about that is, so if, if we have, and, and I, I actually, so I, I agree. Through out of the box to hire a broker for this. However. Again, I think that we have, you know, the possibility of sixty-one, sixty-three summer street and other things coming up. And I think that getting some more exposure for Maynard is a good thing. But. What? Does. What benefit? Would O'Brien have? What incentive would O'Brien have? To market to the best of their ability? If we named three. Developers that want it right away. Like, are they gonna try as hard? Because they know that they've got three developers here in Maynard that are probably going to and that they won't get paid for.
Not costing us anything.
I get Megan, what's your opinion? See how I bounced past that?
I, I, it's hard to say. I mean, I, I can't speak to the level of commitment, um, you know, a private firm would have at, at operating. I, I can't speak to that.
Do you, but that, what I, what you say is something.
I, I guess I was musing. I guess I wasn't actually, but I was kind of, you know, wondering that.
I think economically that makes sense. Go ahead, Chris.
I, I understand that question and, and Jeff asked me that question. We had a discussion. You know, about this last week about, you know, wanting it on the agenda. And I, I think that, you know, um, if, if, if you're the global player that you portray yourself to be in. You have all these different people lined up as potential customers for anything. Would, would you care if three little guys in Maynard want to put the name in a hat up front and we, you know, we want to kind of, in, in essence. You know, um. Take, take that away from, uh, you know, take that off the table, money for those guys that we know are gonna. Come in and they're not gonna go, they're not gonna go to O'Brien's office. They're gonna come right into town hall and go downstairs and see Bill Nemzor or bang on Greg's door and say. Here's what I want to do. Here's my proposal. Then I'm gonna see O'Brien. Which is, which, which I understand, but if you're a global player, like these guys are claiming to be. Do you really, are you really gonna not do your job because you think, uh, uh, you know, a couple of the guys that we know are interested or have been interested in. Any property that's come available in Maynard over the past ten or fifteen years is gonna be involved. You know, I, I. If they're that worried about, if they're that worried about that type of thing, and they're gonna, they're gonna provide us less than a proper service level because. We have three people we think have earned. The right to be named exceptions. Again, just like not answering the question truthfully. Is that the guy you really want to do business with?
Well, I'm not saying, and, and, and I'm not saying that that is their possibility, that is their view. So I don't want to put words in their mouth, but it's more, my question is. Is that how the business works? I don't know. This is my first time with a broker.
I don't know either, but it's, it's, but your, your point is valid. It's certainly a consideration that, uh, you know, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna. Do a little lesson you might have done if you didn't have the name exception clause. I don't know the answer to the question.
I guess my approach, if I were in the issues, would be I'll show them. And go out and actually work harder to get a bid that is not one of those three.
Well, I, I think, and we should all consider, I mean, we, we can ask to change the existing, um, contract that we signed, but if they. We already signed the contract, right? So revisiting this because we did approve this at our last meeting. If we asked to revisit and they. Say no, because that's a disincentive economically, that would make sense for me. We would have to go back, we could break it, but we would have to go back through the RFP process to make sure that that. Requirement is in there and then get those bids from all the brokers. And I would have to imagine, because we've now economically disincentivized them, that they would ask for a higher fee. So that would be higher cost to the town. Potentially, not to mention all the work of going back through, um, contacting all the brokers. And then I agree with Justine that economically would be a disincentive potentially for them to, um, do that if they think it's going to be given to. An in-town group as well. And then lastly, having the fee in there should incentivize the local individuals to make sure they're putting in a competitive bid. If they know that they're gonna be competing against a broader market brought in from a broker. So I. Think maybe if we had gone back from square one, we would consider it, but given that we already have the contract, that it. Would potentially make the fees higher or the search weaker. Um, my preference is to keep it where it is, but I wanted to present the options to the board here tonight. Then this, the broker firm was a recommendation of the reuse committee, I believe, from half of the remainder is here, but I don't know that they. Single a preference for this particular line item within those contracts. Megan, do you have any?
Um, no, I just, I got the names from the group and, and one broker that stopped into the, to town hall to mention that they were interested. And, um, but no, I didn't include any specified language and I didn't receive any from the, uh, working group.
I don't want to cross the town additional funds. But I also don't wanna, you know, it just seems to me that, um. That if it is one of those three suspects, that they have done no work to get it, yet they get their four percent. And that seems unfair.
What changed for you since the last meeting? Cause we did bring up this exact point.
We did, and Chris asked the question and I, I responded, I don't think you answered Chris's question. Voted yes, because I wanted the broker. I think the brokers is an important key. I didn't realize we could exclude these usual suspects that Greg mentioned to say that, uh. That. If one of those three gets it. They wouldn't take the fee.
And, and again, I'm.
The difference was they couldn't. And, you know, I don't know if they, I, I wouldn't use the strong language that Chris has. I don't think they misled us intentionally. I, I don't think they understood the question. But shame on me because I didn't push it. I just said, I don't think you answered Chris's question, and then I didn't push it further. Um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm big on strong language like that because that's just the way it goes. But I, if it's, look, if they, if. If you ask them and they don't want to add this exception into the, into the contract, they don't, and we've signed it and that's, you know, the, the vote was three to one. The town, the town voted to, that that would be the, the, um, broker they use, and that's, that's the way democracy works. But I would certainly not, not ask the question of them, considering that, you know, I thought my question was pretty clear. And the answer was no. And that's not really the answer. Whether, whether it was intentionally misleading or not, that's obviously, that's just, you know, open for debate or, you know, maybe they didn't. I can, I can, I can, I can agree to that too, but certainly the, the answer to the question is not. Reality. Under any circumstance, so they could, if they don't want to change, then, you know, the vote was three to one and we have them as a broker. Move on.
I'm not opposed to asking the question.
And that's all I've done is ask the question.
They said no.
I've asked the question.
Can you as planned, but.
That's what I'm hearing. Megan, is, is there any complications to asking that question that we're not thinking of?
Yeah, and I, well, I think there's, um, a couple paths forward, right? So I can ask them. Um, I will need to know who we're talking about, um, to have that, hear that discussion, exactly who, who these folks are. Um, and also, if they say no, you know, we can cancel this and. And is that direction from the board? Like what? If they say no tomorrow, what do you want me to do? Do you want me to keep the contract as is, or do you want me to cancel and go out and, and. Keep that and have that language and those named exceptions and try to find someone else?
Is, is there a, a timeframe clause in that contract that allows us to cancel?
We can cancel. Yeah.
What, but when do we have until to do that?
Um. I'm not sure. I don't have it up right here. Let me see.
Sure.
I think.
All right. We will, we will figure that out and make sure we have the.
Um.
But I think if, if you're gonna do the ask, what we need to do is anybody who wants to get the named exceptions to give those to Megan. By the end of the week.
Is that, um. I think the board should probably decide on that together, right? It's not just.
I see.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess if they say, if they say no, it doesn't matter who the, who the people are. If they, if they're willing to, if they're willing to adjust the contract. We either come up with the, a name with, you know, one to three names of people we think are. Going to be most likely to, um, get involved in the process.
Well, we could, sorry.
Just, you could just, you could just, as you said, just, um. You know, void the contract and start from scratch and put, you know, then if we start from scratch, we could always put the, you know, the. Uh, a named exceptions clause in the RFP. If you want to.
All right.
Well, this is what we want, but, you know.
If they say no, what is our direction then?
So I think we need to revisit it if they say no. But I, I don't think, I'm not necessarily sure we can decide that right this second, if that makes sense.
We, okay, if we could, I mean, it stands if we. Like, if we don't do anything.
Well, let, let's ask this question. Can we all agree, and I don't know if Chris will, will come on board with it, can we all agree that we should have a broker? To reach out beyond the, this small little region that currently we would detract by putting it, you know, wherever we put it. If the answer to that, go ahead, Chris.
Ab- absolutely. We need, we should have a broker.
Okay.
If we, so that, that was never a question.
If that's the case, then we would move to the next step of, okay, sorry, we can't do business with you because we want this. Uh, we, we failed to put it in our RFP. And it came up during the discussion. Uh, and then we just go through the process again, but what are the costs associated with that? Uh, for filing the RFP, uh, other than staff time? Are there any additional costs?
Of what time?
Filing an RFP.
We just got, do you mean quotes? I'm sorry to jump in here. So, uh, well, yeah, the process, um, to select this broker or, you know, recommend this broker to you all. Was that I took the names, um, that were provided by the working group of brokers. And the one that came into the office and sends out an email and said, you know, we're looking for quotes. Um, for what you charge to market this property, et cetera. I need them by this date. Uh, then several of them reached out to me to do tours. So I went over to, I know you said no staff time, but just trying to tell you what was involved. I went over and did a couple of tours at one summer with, with the team of, um, interested brokers. And then I got their, I got three quotes and I reviewed the quotes, um, negotiated a little bit, went back and forth and, and landed on this recommendation. So that, we didn't have to advertise anywhere. We didn't have to, um, post newspaper or on Conbuys. This was just a, um.
It wasn't a formal RFP that we issued.
Not yet. Not to get a broker.
For the broker.
That'll, that'll come with the.
The RFP is what you looked at last week that's still being looked at by, by legal counsel and that has not. Been, um, posted yet. That would be, you know, in accordance with the broker to say like, this is what we're looking.
All right. That's, that was, I was mistaken in thinking that there was a cost associated, other than your town, which is valuable. Um, but there was a cost associated with, um. Getting bids from these various, uh, brokers and there was not.
No, it's just the time, you know, I think one thing to think about too is like, we were try, we, I was on track. Not that this should color the decision, but in full transparency, you know, we're on track to try to, um, have an article on the warrant to sell this in, in the spring. Um, and that doesn't mean we couldn't do that if we had to start over right now, um, but I'm just. It's, it is a tight turnaround because, um, you know, when we have to. Get all the quotes in and kind of start the relationship. So that's, that's a factor.
Yep.
Right. Presumably you could still go to a town meeting without us, us, without someone in mind who you're gonna sell to. But one of the lessons we learned from Coolish School is that pretty strong argument that people made in like a year is who we're selling. And under what conditions?
Directions.
Is there, is there a way to, obviously, have Megan asked or have whoever asked about the named exception clause? And then. She comes back on the, the next, at the next meeting with that answer. And from there, we decide what we're willing to do, whether we go forward or we don't.
I don't see any reason why we can't pursue that path.
Right. You can, right. If the chair approves the agenda, then includes a consideration of, uh, brokerage, uh, whatever. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The same.
All right. Megan, are you clear on the ask?
Yes, you want me to ask O'Brien if they would do a named exception clause for three named exceptions? Is that correct? Or do we have a number in mind? Does it matter?
It's two or, I am more than three.
O'Brien might ask, who we talking?
No more than three.
And you want to know, you want to know.
Well, we.
And want to know the three tonight so that Megan can tell.
Not necessarily. I just want to be prepared that, let's say they say.
Let's see if they're willing to consider.
Yeah.
Well, otherwise.
No, no, I know.
What's your suggestion?
No, no, that's. Just nailed it.
Okay.
If, if they say, I might consider it, pay on who the three are. And we'll come back to the board and ask.
All right. I.
Yes.
That works.
It's still. Oh, sorry.
Chris, do you have any, do you have a comment?
No, I'm good.
All right, Megan.
Um. So the next meeting was the seventh, right? In three weeks. And so. And I don't want to belabor this too much, but I mean, there. There is, we were kind of working towards starting to list this, so this will shift the timeline. So I, I just want to be clear about that. Um, but I, I'm ha, so I. So I, I just want to be clear about that, um, but I, I'm ha, so I will ask them if they want, if they would be willing to. Um, add in a clause, and if they say yes, then we'll prepare language for your review, um. To find out who they are though at that next meeting, and then if they say no, then I'll just await, wait for the seventh for, for kind of further discussion.
How much is that delay gonna hurt?
I mean, it's three weeks, um, you know, the, O'Brien is currently reviewing all the materials. We were hoping to, um, you know, have the RFP finalized this week and. Kind of get going on, um, posting.
Okay, I mean, my, my preference. Is if they say no to maintain the current contract, my concern is if we go back. And put it back out to the brokers, it'll come back with a higher fee. In return for including those named exemptions, and I'm not sure that trade off is, is worth it, especially given the time consideration, but that's my opinion. It sounds like everybody else wants to ask and then pause and reevaluate at the next meeting.
That was my preference.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on item twelve? Moving on to thirteen, we have an update for the Green Meadow School Building Project.
Right, but, um, I've given this update, I think like three times in the past week. So, or at least twice, I spoke to the finance committee and I spoke to the budget subcommittee regarding, um. And actually, uh, the building committee that we, uh, meeting that we had today. Actually went over the slides that we're looking at right now, which are included on board docs and our public comments, um, and that is our working group PowerPoint. Um, and it basically is talking about the timeline, um, this, the building square footage. And the difference in the square footage, um, actually, though Greg, I think that.
This is slightly older, I think.
This is the older one, so, um, we saw a new one today that we probably can get posted as well. Um, which explains a little bit more about the increase in the square footage, where those specifically are and what. What the actual cost is, or the estimated cost is.
That's true, so that, some of those are, but with not highlighted specifically is where there was, um. Um, it would, where it just wasn't clear about what the additional square footage was, but, and I'm saying additional, but that's again, that's objective. As we heard in today's meeting, that's, that some members of the building committee felt like it's not additional, it's, it's, it's definitely. Uh, square footage for after school program, square footage for, um, um, care, uh, council.
Two guys counselors.
You're right.
Two guys counselors before an after school program, um.
Right, and they're saying that those are ongoing programs, so there should be space to be into it and. Um, but I, I, but this particular, uh, presentation, I think does show, but I think it's also good context for the public, which is. How we got to where we are in the current draft design, here are the different options that the school building committee considered. Um, it's, it's a lot of good context.
Yeah.
It, it does require, like, a, a particularly interest system. We really have to look at this, like, really have to come through it to catch these nuances that we're talking about, like square footage wise and those costs associated with it. Otherwise, if you just look at the bottom line, that's a big number. And, and I think that's what, I don't know if you just need, but that's, that's what the building committee and through its working group are trying to. Um, that's what it's trying to like, take the layers off, it's like, it's not just this number, how did we get this number? Well, talk about all these options. These, these concept plans were considered, here's some pros and cons, and this is what the building committee decided. Uh, but, and, and these costs also include both eligible and ineligible, um, features. Uh, out, outdoor costs, we talked about contingencies today, those are aspects of any project. Um, and something I'm interested in is if and when the time comes, what are sort of be the ad alternates, so. I appreciated that, that top, uh, that discussion work, it's sort of like. You know, we have the essence of the school, which the MSBA had agreed to, like, yep, if you want to check these boxes of programming, otherwise this is what you needed in the school. Well, what else is, and I think that's maybe the subject of the, of the building committee work group. Wh- what, why, why is made it special, so to speak, like, why, why is this school doing more than just like the bare minimum of MSBA would say? But although admittedly, MSBA, although they have updated recently, very recently, some of their formulaic approach to like funding. It's, it is still frankly, in my opinion, a little antiquated, like, they are not giving the fifty-five percent. As, as might be, you know, assumed by us, made in particular, they are not reimbursing fifty-five percent, they're reimbursing a portion. Of a eligible cost brings their formula.
Fifty-five percent of eligible.
Yes.
So, but it.
No, and then up to a square footage.
Exactly, so their square footage amount, so they, back when they, you know, back even probably a few years ago. The cost to build a school was between three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars a square foot, so. MSBA had a max of, they will, they will reimburse up to the three hundred and sixty dollar per square foot number. And it's like fifty-five percent of that three hundred and sixty dollar square foot number. The problem is, now the costs are, we're estimating seven hundred dollars a square foot. But MSBA is, and they did increase, but they increased to three hundred and ninety-three dollars a square foot. But that's still well outweighs what, so they're, they're gonna pay fifty-eight point six-three percent. Of three hun, basically three hundred and ninety-three dollars a square foot. So that's why it looks so much different and honestly, like the, the narrative that I had, I had heard up until now. And I had in my head was it was going to be about a fifty percent reimbursement issue with, you know, with eligible costs. I think the important part is that a lot of this is eligible costs. There, there's not as much ineligible costs, it's just a matter of, of the eligible costs, they're still only going to reimburse the fifty-eight percent of that. So that's where we end up, we have gotten, again, with the, with the update. With the updated numbers, um, the MSBA has agreed, their board agreed in December. To update the construction to the three hundred and ninety-three dollars a square foot. Um, the design cost of thirty-nine dollars a square foot and, um, the architect and OPM numbers, because those have gone up. We're looking at now a reimbursement from MSBA of about thirty-eight percent. Which is a lot more than the twenty-three to twenty-five percent we were seeing a month ago. So, that's, that's my understanding of it at the moment. Subjected. Um, you know, they're, they're very, uh, you know, unfortunately, it's one of those things, you, you know, one of the things that we talked about today is, is that. There are a lot, there's a lot of contingency in this and, um, there's a lot of conservative. There are a lot of conservative numbers in here, and hopefully, some of these numbers will go down, but unfortunately, we can't. We can't build a building saying, well, approve this, but we hope we won't spend that much money. You know, we have to be solid and, and we have to understand that this building is worth what we're going to ask the town, the taxpayers to pay for it. If it comes in less, great, but we have to stand by the amount that we're, we're asking the taxpayers. Exactly. Yep.
Which did come in lower, the bids came in lower.
Right.
Have it in the market at a great time.
Exactly, so, um, yeah, so that is, that is my update at the moment, we have another, um, budget meeting. Next week. And I will continue to update as I, as we get more information.
About forty-eight million, forty-nine million, scary number.
It is, it's better than fifty-four.
Yes.
Like, I agree, it is, it is still a lot of money.
And what we would actually bond for may not be that enough, right, so you bond according to, you know, if you'd advise them, uh, bond council. And, and you bond for what you need and not in that necessarily the entire amount, you bond phases. So it's difficult to say what the actual like cost of that, for some family tax payers is gonna be. We, you, we can make projections, it's gonna be probably based on current market, or just like, we're not, we wouldn't bond for this for. I don't even know, I could have never built a school, like, you know, we wouldn't bond for another year perhaps, what's, what's the market, what's the bond market?
Nothing new for me, just the same old, I just want to make sure that. Me is talking with planning board, especially around those soil, soil disposal costs and the site access, I haven't seen any. New information on those topics and make sure they're interfacing with sustainability committee, um, especially about the. Possible incentives which weren't factored in initially and to make sure we have the energy modeling and. Um, are aligned with the best practices that we saw from, uh, acting and now the presentations from Lexington. That, that we've started to look at to make sure that we're, we're taking advantage of the experience from them as well.
I've not seen any presentations from or less.
Okay, no, I thought you guys had toured the Acton building, I don't.
I'm not.
Yeah, so the sustainability committee has offered to come and present these things. Many times, I think, on, and even bring in experts from in Lexington and to debt tiers for the committee, so. I just want to make sure, I'm reiterating that those opportunities are still available to learn from our neighbors who have.
I know.
And recent.
I know Phil was, was following up with, I think it was, um, I think Phil was following up with Ken is last, uh, that I saw. Uh, because one of the things that we want to make sure that we're comparing is we're comparing apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, but last I knew that that was it, but I can definitely follow.
Okay, Newhouse is the liaison from the sustainability committee to the green metal building committee subcommittee for. Energy.
Yes.
Sustainability subcommittee.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a little roundabout, but still, like, I, I believe that if there was, my opinion is, it's to that point, like. Phil's, Phil's pretty good about what he's doing, like, he's trying to give like a context and like a picture of the different considerations and factors. We're not, I'm talking about the, well, he's, he's the project. And, um. So why has it not necessarily come up to the full building committee to consider site tours? I'm not sure. Maybe you got lost between Ken conveying to the subcommittee and then the subcommittee committee, Jerry Culver, the chair, and the chair cannot convene on the agenda, I don't know. But, um, it is considerations to Justin's point, you know, the Acton, my understanding. The resonant of Acton, my little girl goes to that brand new school, massive and complex and often costly. And, but they did, going in, having it to be a fully green building, like, that was like a direction from the town. This will be the most green building you can get, great, that's fine.
Doesn't matter the cost.
I don't, I don't want to say that, I, I pay this day, I, I'm just saying, um, I don't, I don't believe, in my opinion. That was necessarily the direction for this town, is to go into having the most green building. I think this, I think the building committee has tried to weigh those costs, I think correctly, it's trying to say like, oh, here's the advantages, here's the energy. Um, um, uh, efficiencies that could be presented by these different.
And I will say, so, um, one of the things, the eligible costs, um, you know, that fifty-eight point six-three percent. Reimbursement for MSBA share, two percent is for, um, is for lead certified and. One point one percent base updated today is for, um, is for an additional energy something. That he said that typically they don't get, a lot of projects don't get too right off the bat, they get from zero to. Zero to two, um, and they were pretty confident at the one point one percent, so that's why we now have a fifty-eight point six-three percent reimbursement rate. That was after.
Very good, and I'll, I'll just note that I still get the information from that sustainability subcommittee meeting ends up getting presented either to the full group. Or to the, um, budget or the designer, the other sub-working groups of the Green Meadow. Um, and there's still, um, a lack of, there's no time to evaluate the information, and so when gaps such as. Um, uh, not including potential incentives or rebates into the cost estimates, those things aren't being caught and they're being passed on. So there still seems, I don't know where the communication issue is, but there's still some communication issues. Um, and, uh, I know they're looking for things like the numbers on the energy modeling that should have been done to make these cost estimates and. Not being able to get fairly basic information that went into the price assumption, so there's, there's still, still seems to be a gap there and I want to make sure we resolve that. Soon.
I will say that, um, from what I can tell, uh, the designers met with the sustainability committee, subcommittee. Seven times, uh, in a month and a half, as opposed to any other committee that they met with. So they definitely had met with them plenty of times.
That's the sustainability subcommittee though.
Yeah.
Right, so I still think there's a lack of ability to get information in there, I think they've, the sustainability committee has requested having other members or ringing in. People from Acton with the experience and being told, no, they can't have a second person on that group, and so I think, I think Ken feels he's, he's been having trouble, okay. That may be, that may be from previous, so I, from before, I know we're still waiting on things like energy modeling, making sure that. Uh, rebasing incentives are factored in, making sure that the building, um, the materials are going in are, are being considered both from a safety and sustainability perspective. Well, well, the safety is, is I think one of the factors there.
That's, that's my concern.
Well, the, I think the concern is if we include some materials that may be considered safe today, that if they're not considered safe in ten years. We have some indication, then that's, that's a big cost decrease because we'll have to remedy that. Uh, at some point as well, and then also making sure that we're aware of stretch energy codes that will go into place within the next. Five to ten years from the city of Massachusetts, because otherwise we would have to, as soon as we need to repair something in the building, retroactively upgrade it to code. And that can cause challenges as well, so to make sure that we're at least aware of that and we're actively paying for it.
Okay, so, but you're, so you're going to anticipate what might be voted in, in five to ten years?
I think some of them are already set, but that's what I want the experts, the sustainability committee and the subcommittee to make sure that they're aware of and. Are not being caught blind because we didn't consider stuff that's already being phased in and has already been approved by the legislature.
In, in Jeff's events, obviously, uh, with the new, with the new, um, administration, and my understanding is.
Yeah.
Green goals, and I don't know, even though it was Governor Baker's, um, goal to have, uh, the carbon neutral by twenty, there, fifty? Can't remember, it was pretty aggressive, and, and my, my expectation is the Healy administration will probably follow suit if not.
Yeah, and that's, and that's fine, it's just again, I, as David pointed out, forty-nine million dollars is a lot of money, and so if. If these things don't add to the cost, fabulous, if they do add to the cost, then I'm gonna have a problem.
And I'm not even seeing the information to even make that assessment right now, so I want to see the information.
I think that's where Justin and I have a core coming because neither of us are on the energy subcommittee.
Sustainability.
Thank you.
Another reason.
So we're not sure how like, I mean, as to why it makes it onto the.
And, and that's why I'm saying I'm not either, nor is the sustainability committee, and it does seem to still be a, a outstanding communication gap in that area.
Another reason, Josh Morris is the, I think his title is Commissioner of Public Buildings in the city of Newton.
I said, he's, he's contributed to stuff.
Yeah, he just recently, uh, finished a fully, um, environmental friendly. Uh, school over Newton and apparently they have a commitment in the city of Newton. To meet, to have all of their municipal buildings.
Sure.
At net zero essentially by a certain date certain, so he might be helpful in telling us, I think some of the things.
Look at the tax base though.
Yeah, uh, true, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting.
It just went back to money, I'm sorry, it really.
Yes, but the, the, the issue is that it may cost, and I don't know the answer to this, but it may cost more money upfront. But when, once you get into operational costs and everything else, that you make up that money very quickly. And the overall s- cost to the community over, say, a ten-year period is much lower.
That, that, that's the correct argument you should be.
Yeah.
And, and then, and the similar sort of, when we came up today, when we were talking about the after school program and the square footage was quoted to that, and people were like, oh. Is that revenue generating, is that gonna be a cost of the school district if we don't include sort of like. Uh, uh, space committed specifically to that, and for the same sort of like trade offs. Is it worth the investment of having an after school program that is funding itself or contributing to the school district? And generally, I believe, because, well, yes, it is, because they do pay a certain amount towards, towards the operation costs to be in the building. And, and so it's kind of similar, just on a different scale, and, uh, but, um, as I said earlier, in my. In my sort of understanding of the town of Maynard, you, you know, although it's on the new development principles to like, use natural resources. Why do you want, and I think we're all like the green communities, we are looking for most efficiency. My, my expectation is, town of Maynard has not, we don't have it as like, as strong as an agenda as a town. So to pursue, you know, zero carbon emissions, that level of energy efficiencies as compared to maybe our neighbors, New, Acton. So very probably, occurred, um, but it's not the same, we're not doing it, you're gonna see electric cop cars soon, you know, like, we're, we're, we're sitting under LED lights. It's just not quite to the same.
And, and my, I'll, I'll say again for the money is that I think when the costs for the outlays for the HVAC system were evaluated. There was no accounting for the different incentives in terms of rebates and structures that existed, so. How can you tell me it's about the money when we don't have accurate numbers going in to make the decisions right now? So I'm, I'm very worried that we need to get accurate figures. And this four-month window is being eaten up or one month into it, we need to make sure we light a fire to make sure we understand that, yes, we've accounted for what we know is coming out of the IRA. What's come out of, um, the legislative actions from the state and that we're factoring those in, because the. Rebase incentives change depending on the type of, uh, system used, and we need to combine that with specifics of our site. And I haven't seen that work being done yet, and I want to make sure that work is being done well in advance so that we have confidence that it was done.
You're right.
As accurately as we can.
So when we had the conversation on the HVAC system, so that information was wrong?
That's what I'm being told, it was not by the sustainability, sustainability committee members and asking how. Um, incentives. Um incentives from the Inflation Reduction Act and from Massachusetts um rebates were factored in, that they were not factored in correctly. And this is not the first time I've brought this up. I think I've brought it up in every single meeting since the one in December where we. Decided to ask the MSBA for an extension.
That might be the case. The building committee or anyone who's actively for this project should be prepared to answer those questions, especially in a panel meeting. And I'm powerful, whatever the case, you you should be able to say, are we gonna be green? Is this a good return on investment? Yes, because this is. And 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 that investment should include rebates, et cetera.
And it'll for site access where I I feel that I seem to be like, don't worry, we'll handle it, but I need more than that. I wanna see what the actual. Considerations were behind that, or or what I really want is for the planning board to see that and make sure that they're have an opportunity to. Get questions, because they will need to approve the site access.
Correct, but who? Eventually.
Yeah.
But who did they meet with? Did they meet with? They didn't meet?
They have not been to the planning board, I understand.
I understand, but they all, but they did, because obviously, I think they met with Bill Munzer and.
I think they have met with Bill, but not in like a certain official capacity. I don't think.
Correct. It was like one of those, you know.
I don't think we, it was even like this. So we have like an unofficial pre-application meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I might.
Okay.
Megan, what's your understanding?
Yeah, Bill's met with them as, you know, as staff, um but they haven't been before the planning board yet.
Right, but they they had come before the staff, though, correct?
Yeah, Bill, I mean, yeah, Bill's definitely met with them. I think. Double check. Yeah. Or email, or he's been.
Yeah.
Been in contact.
Is there an expectation that they'll come to the planning board even before, like even like whatever certain requirements are maybe you go and plan for? Do you think they're gonna skip any? I don't know, putting you on the spot. Do you think there's any expectation to go to the planning board?
I thought that that was the, I thought that that was the recommendation, but I, you know, I don't recall the schedule. I thought we we had it planned um at the, one of the last. Meetings. It was discussed that that was the direction. But I'll confirm, I'll confirm the date and let everyone know. Sorry, I don't have it.
Yeah, and if if by, well, before it comes to our vote, if they can convince the. Sustainability Committee and the planning board that everything is square in the.
They actually don't have to be sustainability.
Well, I'm saying I I wanna be convinced by the sustainability committee that they're comfortable, that they have it as well. What's that?
And you're one member.
Not on the sustainability committee.
What? On the board.
On this board, yes.
Yeah, but we have talked about an F A. And had, and in F Q, it could, and I think it should work as a stronger argument to listen.
Yeah.
How are we being energy efficient minded? What rebates have we applied for?
Yeah.
That's my.
I did, um.
I don't know.
I actually.
Thanks.
I I sent, I sent something to um to Phil actually today because uh I was looking, actually looking at the Concord. Middle School. Uh they're building a middle school or they're they're working to try to build a middle school and um they have a vote coming up soon. And uh their F A Qs are amazing. And so I basically sent it to Bill and said, here, like, can can we do? Because there was a lot of stuff that I think that you, we have a lot of ideas of what an F A Q, what F A Q should have in it.
Yeah.
But I think, again. Going back to like, you don't know what you don't know, or you don't know what you're supposed to ask or or whatever. It's good to have kind of a jumping off point and say, oh, well. These are typical questions, so this is whatever. So um so I think we're gonna work uh harder getting that out.
Yeah, and I'll, that's great. I'll I'll just watch, because I've asked about sustainability for the Green Meadow before and in meetings, and I've been told. That, you know, well, well, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and meet this certain expectation list that's from older standards that just are not meeting the expectations of. Current environmental standards that don't um factor in current. So it would be, say, the lead energy list, which is a a minimal requirement as opposed to what I've. Heard from the projects before, which is that will be the extent of our sustainability commitment. And that I don't think will will ask muster with a large number of environmentally conscious voters in town. But I just wanna make sure that the answers on that back are in step with uh the expectations um from that sustainability subcommittee meeting and the sustainability committee. And then they've really considered the incentives and the rebates and the actual current environment, and I'm just still not seeing that link up. To this day, so I just wanna make sure that that. Um, that gap gets closed. All right. Any other comments on the Green Meadow? School building project?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. All right. Uh moving on to fourteen, which is correspondences, we have five this evening.
I'll move to accept and I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Accept and approve correspondence A through E as shown.
Second.
Any comments or discussion on the correspondences?
I was intrigued by the um ever source is, you know, and I know it's going up everywhere, but you know, they're predicting a um. Something like a twenty, uh thirty to thirty-one percent hike in um. So uh that's just something to keep in mind with anyone who has a lecture.
And it's true. Adds to the cost of living overall.
Yeah.
And we can't ignore that when we're making other decisions as well.
My, I son uses a different electric company and it was. That theirs went up considerably as well.
There you go.
Yeah. Cost of doing business, it's a utility.
That's why we charge in the pushy at the town.
Yeah, where are we at the aggregation?
Oh, the aggregation, no loop in that's up right now.
Okay, well, the um. We now have through town council, the language for the agreement with Peregrine, so we're moving forward on creating that energy plan.
It's true. But I mean, that like this, this isn't gonna hit anytime soon.
No, that that won't, that 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 can take a long time, especially once the long step is, once we. Agree the town and then we give it to the state and then they can sit on it for a while historically. So that's been, that's been a challenge in other towns and cities. Okay, any other comments on the correspondences? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor of Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Minutes, we have one set of minutes from January third. Any comments on the minutes?
We'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of January third, twenty twenty-three, as shown.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Very good. Moving on to the town administrator report.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief, because I feel like this has been a long Monday, but it's Tuesday. Tough coming off the three-day weekend. Um, so as always, I encourage the public to look at the town minister's report, which is both on Worducks and. To be listed on the website. Speaking of the website. Um. We were gonna launch the website today, but we wanted, there was one sort of like technical challenge. We wanted to make sure it was addressed. So the new. Launch date evidently is next Monday, which is the twenty-third. I don't know, but sorry. Um. Regardless, it should be mostly seamless for the public. They'll go to the same web address and let's see the 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 town's website. However, as I said, in the box, um it's like we're meeting, I I asked the public's patience, I'm sure they will be uh. Growing pains as we as we adopt, you know, most of the information is is just automatically transferred into the website. The departments have been looking at their um at the at the page uh that it's not yet launched. And so and there's a training head and whatnot, um but I'm sure that it's something that we need to get addressed. Otherwise, um. Myself, uh Assistant Town Minister, Giselle Mudo, and the Resources Manager, Stephanie Duncan, will be attending as a, as a. A number of select board members will be attending Massachusetts Association Annual Meeting. Um, which is on Friday and Saturday. So me and May won't be here, Craig and George.
Excellent.
And the last thing, oh, the fire station. So uh I'll I'll take off from Boston on Saturday and I'll head back out here. For the two o'clock uh grand public opening of the new fire station on Setbury Street. And so um. Encourage the public to attend and always thank you to the departments for their contributions to the town minister's work. And I think there's a lot of great information on there. Uh, that's all I have to say.
All right, any comments on the town administrator report? I'll I'll congratulate the assistant town clerk on the new arrival.
Yeah.
Very nice. Good to see that there. And uh I'll thank the DPW for their response um to the water break. Um, you know, it's a significant break and under there and and getting that all repaired uh by that evening, so um. Thank you to the DPW. Uh, we will move on to the chair report, so I am looking forward to attending the MMA conference myself. And the fire station opening after that. Uh I will be out for the next meeting. Justine will be taking over and handling the agenda and and sharing. Uh, thank you for everybody who's reached out recently over the last uh. Week or so, and I hope to be recovered enough to join you all for the joint budget review, but we will see. So. That is it for me today. Justine?
Uh, same, I am, uh, I will be attending the Massachusetts School Convention on Friday and Saturday as well, looking forward to it. Um. Also, I do wanna also commend the uh the DPW for their work on the storm that wasn't supposed to be the storm that was the storm.
Yeah.
Uh, so I appreciate that. And I'm sure that there were some long hours that were put in because that wasn't predicted to be what it was. Um, and I appreciate uh all the hard work that goes into that. So so thank you very much.
David?
Uh, not really anything, um other than I echo the comments on the DPW, especially for their response to the water main break. And the um and the way that they treated the roads, uh pre-treated and and afterwards. Uh especially. Uh. Important when you're there on a hill and they really take care of of our hill, which is good. Um, I had the opportunity to, uh, I was invited to meet with a group of Cub Scouts. Uh, we could go today. And um it was a really enjoyable experience. Um, they need. To have a conversation about municipal government in order to earn some type of a badge to make their way towards Boy Scouts. Um, BSA. And um these kids were, you know, it was, it was. One of the young, uh, young man starts off by saying, I have a presentation. And he did his presentation on litter. And how litter affects the environment and everything else. And then the discussion went into what Maynard could do. To um to help littering, et cetera. Um, but there were, then the the conversation went on for a while longer, went on for about an hour and a half and really wonderful. Um, and these kids, I encouraged them to come to meetings and watch online and. Um, and uh I I think they will be leaders of the future. And uh it was really kind of fun to be able to sit in on that. So thank you to the Cub Scouts for inviting me. I enjoyed it. And it was a lot of fun and uh I hope to be able to do it again. That's it.
Chris?
Yep, um, my only one question, um, and it's not, I don't know, I don't expect the answer tonight, but Greg. Can you give us an update in the next meeting or two? Um, eh, what's the plan for the temporary garage next to the old fire station that housed the old ladder truck?
I I can tell you right now.
Okay.
The plan is to move it. We wanna keep it.
Where we keep, where we put this? Like, where's it going?
Definitely want it down at the one to three garage.
All right, all right, that's what I assumed, but I hadn't, I hadn't heard anything about it, so I was just curious.
Yeah, that's that's the plan.
All right.
Be on it. Oh, yeah.
We own it.
We own it.
All right. Anything else, Chris?
That's all, thanks.
All right, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So move.
By the second.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We are adjourned. Next meeting is February seventh. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Good night.